Good evening, we welcome you here to our West Valley City Council meeting. We call our meeting to order, we note that we have a full council present, all members of the council are in attendance. We will begin tonight by turning to Councilmember Steve Buehler for our opening ceremony.
Thank you Mayor, and I'm going to direct my comments and really the content of this ceremony to those high schoolers who are with us here today. You're free to come every single week, but it's nice to have you once a year come and fill our hall and be recognized for the good things that you do. It's an honor to have you here and I hope you feel honored to be here, this is a sign of your academic excellence. When I was your age, one of the popular bands was Pink Floyd, and one of the popular albums was The Wall, and on the wall was a song where they sang "We Don't Need No Education." Now, that's a great song, and you kids are smart enough to know that that's a double negative which really means we do need an education, and that's why you've done so well in school. Want to congratulate you, this is a payday for your parents and your grandparents to know that you're doing well and that you're on the right track. You're juniors, so you've got a year to go, and I would advise you to not blow it, you've got to stay focused and get that last year under your belt, and then you're on to college or trade school or other good things, entrepreneurial activities or whatever you might choose to do. So we want to celebrate you tonight and congratulate you, and to do so I've asked Mr. Oss Lane to play about one minute of the Great Anthem, it's two weeks early, but we're getting ready for summer. Mr. Oss Lane? Congratulations, and as was written in my yearbook, the great advice, have a great summer.
Thank you very much. With that, we continue on our agenda, and next we'll have the approval of our minutes for May 5th, excuse me, from our regular council meeting. To the council.
Mayor, move for approval of the minutes of May 5th.
We have a motion to approve, do we have a second?
Second.
We have the second, any discussion? Seeing none, we'll place that for vote all in favor of approving the minutes, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. Motion passes unanimously, the minutes are approved. Next on our program is why you're here tonight, the awards ceremonies and proclamations portion of our agenda. We will present tonight what is called the Mayor's Star of Excellence Awards, which was begun a few years ago, to students of Granger, Hunter, Cypress, and Taylorsville High Schools. I have before me a list of students that we will read their names and have them come forward. We will have a member of the council, we'll rotate that assignment a little bit, who will stand down here and present to you your award. No, you go stand down there. We want you to shake their hand, and if there are those here who want to take pictures, you are certainly welcome to do so, to come up here, close to the front, and I'm wondering if we ought to move the podium for those pictures, just temporarily. Thank you Jake, we appreciate that. We can always get that set back up, and that way those of you who want to can take pictures and you're welcome to come up front here, whatever, for that. First, we're going to ask Councilman Lars Nordfeldt if he would step down there with those that he has ready. We will begin with Cypress High School, and we think that most of these will be here, and it's my job to try and pronounce names, and I welcome any corrections, so this is where you get a chance to correct us if we don't do the pronunciation right. So we'll begin. We invite then Noah Clark, if he's here, if you'd come forward. Yeah, when you're done, maybe if they just step over to the side here after the picture is taken. Okay. Well, maybe what we'll have you do, if you'll go just on the other side of Councilman Nordfeldt, right there, that's the place. Okay, and then each one will go over there and then they'll do a group shot, is that the intent from?
For all of Cypress.
For all of Cypress. Okay, we'll have fun with that because some of these will have several councilmen involved. So next from Cypress High School would be Andrew Williams, if he's here. Okay. Oh. Was he too fast? We can make him come back. Okay. Next will be Miranda Peterson. Next is now pronounced the Spanish pronunciation, Angeles Martinez Acevedo, is he here or she? When I get into a different language, I don't know. Not here, okay. Jaren Evans. There he is. Joshua Hanson. Tristan Thompson. Okay, Marissa Fowler. And Dawson Croxel. Oh, okay. Then all of Cypress, we get to come back over. Next, we invite Councilman Steve Buehler to come forward, and we will now do Granger's, beginning with Granger, so first of all Manuel Santana. Okay, Madeline Buehler. Next Madison Weaver. Up here. Adam R. Newton. Eric J. Ortiz. Spencer B. Fulton. Up here. Alexander P. Smith. Oh, jumping up. Jasmine E. Reyes Montilego Longo, Monte Longo. Up here, Karen O. Shamal. That's all for Councilman Buehler, we'll have him step aside, and Councilman Tom Hune will go down and do some more for Granger. So if the Granger ones will stay there, it doesn't line up with our councilmen, but that's okay. Kelsey H. Barfusen? Is that close? Not close, I can tell by the smile, not close at all. Eric T. Denler. Up here, Melanie E. Bray. There she is. Tianna M. Lewis. Giselle L. Jones. And Christopher Mota Opuka. See Christopher here, Jessica M. Hamlet? Oh, excuse me, that's right, that's all of Granger. Thank you council, so we'll ask those from Granger to come back and stew around the circle like you saw the other students do, and we'll ask our two councilmen to stay close by, maybe leave their end. All right. Councilman Hune will continue, we'll now go to Hunter High School students, and this is Jessica M. Hamlet. People got up and moved around, and, sorry, I wasn't sure, so. Then she's not here, then Drew Gurland Jensen. And he's coming from the back, maybe. And Mariah M. Jensen. Okay, thank you Councilman Hune, and next we go to Councilwoman Karen Lang. This is still continuing with Hunter High School graduates. Drew, excuse me, Bill V. Tran. See him, then Jeslyn Maxwell. Up here either, Melissa A. Marsh. Kayden M. Hall. Ivan A. Cardenas. McKenna Miller. Okay, Esther Castellón Pasias. Kayden Summers. Okay, Samuel R. Short. Okay, Councilman Lang, thank you, now we're going to continue with Hunter, but now Councilman Corey Rushton. Connor D. Applegate. Joseph Farmouth. Okay, Kylie K. Harrison. Okay, now this one will be a challenge. Kylie Boye and Gilmore. Anywhere close? Boye. Christopher K. Cox. Adam S. Dallin. Alyssa M. No. Hannah, oh, excuse me, weren't quite there. Were you finished? Okay, Hannah K. Bigum, or Bigum. Up here. Abby Oborn. Here Angelina Nuyen. Thank you Councilman Rushton, next Councilman Steve Vincent, we'll continue on with a few more Hunter. I think it's Alia L. Taylor. Heather L. Keltzer. Then Malcolm D. Harrison. Okay, that's all the students from Hunter High School, so we'll have you come and form the circle here, and anyone wanting to take pictures can. And Councilman Vincent will come back up, but we'll finish up with the Taylorsville High School. Emma Mike Hill. Araden Briggs. Vicki Nuyen. Thomas Nuyen. Ashley May. Alina May. Jessie Hong. Okay, that's all on my list, is my list complete? Did I miss anyone or skip a line or, okay. Then we'll invite the Taylorsville High School graduates over here for a picture. Any more pictures? To all of the graduates, their family members and friends who've come, thank you very much, we appreciate your being here, we appreciate your excellence in education and the things that you do. Ah ha, apparently on some of the certificates, the name was not spelled correctly, and so if you'll make sure you touch base right up here with our recorder, we'll see that those get corrected and a new one given to you, okay? And I think at least one council member has some comments, Councilman Rushton.
Thank you Mayor, I just want to say in the 35 years of West Valley City, there's been several councilmembers who have been graduates of Cypress High, several graduates of Granger High, including the two gentlemen on either side of me, served with some from Taylorsville as well, but I get lonely sometimes being the only Hunter boy in this chamber, I want to congratulate everyone, but I just wanted to say it's very nice to, for once, you know, once a year or so, this chamber at Hunter I want to congratulate everyone, but I just wanted to say it's very nice to, for once, you know, once a year or so, that this chamber at Hunter Heights outnumbered the rest of the schools.
Maybe someday when Councilman Rushton gets old enough, he'll be able to claim Granger as well. And we appreciate his youthfulness for us. And then, was there another comment? Okay. Now, we say to you, you are welcome all to stay if you would like for the business portion of our meeting, but if you have to leave, we won't be offended. Okay? We're going to go on to some public comment and some public hearings on ordinances in our city. So we'll wait just a minute. Thank you all for coming again.
Proud grandpas, I can tell.
Yes.
There you go. Congratulations.
Thank you.
No, it's gonna be tomorrow morning. I'm gonna post it on the West Valley City Facebook page. So you go to wvc-ut.gov and they'll be on there. And you can do what you guys do and send it around the world.
Okay, we'll continue on with our regular agenda. We have our comment, our comment period. We have signed up tonight, Brittany Peterson, who can take as much as five minutes. What's that? Well, we'll check that out. Were you here to speak just on any issue you wanted, or were you here for part of one of the public hearings for the items on our agenda, application ZT-2 2015? Or?
Yes, the daycare.
The daycare, that's why you're here?
The preschool.
All right, the preschool, that's right. Okay. Then, we won't have you speak now. We'll have you speak because there'll be an opportunity for that. This part is for any issue of that, so don't leave that. Then, there's no others here for public comment. Then we'll turn to the city manager. Any comments tonight?
No, sir, thank you.
Thank you to the council members. Any comments you want to bring up this evening? Once, twice each way? Okay. Then that's taken care of. Next on our agenda is that we will be holding now a public hearing. This is on application number ZT-2-2015 filed by Alicia Underman requesting an ordinance text amendment to modify home preschool requirements. The request, I believe, was for 12. This went to the Planning Commission and it was approved at 8. And so, this is the number of students that are allowed during a single session in a home for preschool. I think that fairly well stated it. Then with that introduction, then we will declare open the public hearing portion, the public input section of this, and invite anyone who is here to come forward to the microphone and speak to this issue. This is on the preschool.
I'm Alicia Underman. I was just wondering if you had any questions concerning the ordinance change that has been brought up for us. Do we have any questions or concerns?
Well, if any come up, they do have the right to indicate and we'll have them ask you. If you have any comments you would like to add.
Um, but I think everyone got the emails and things of that sort. I'm not quite sure you want me to, you know, say the same things, or if you kind of understood everything that we had talked about in our emails and things of that sort, so. Okay.
No, I would say, I would give, you've got the mic, I'd give us the, you know.
You're certainly welcome. Remember that the emails were not part of our public record here. So if there are items you would like to be on the public record, and for those listening in or watching, you're welcome to do so.
Okay. I know that one of your main concerns was traffic. We just wanted to remind you that every application for the in-home preschool is reviewed before they can even receive their license. So currently, all of the neighbors within 300 feet radius are notified when an applicant is submitted. If there are issues or concerns from neighbors, they have the opportunity to come forward before the license is even granted. And so, they would be able to help resolve those issues of traffic or concerns from neighbors, complaints, things of that sort, before the preschool is even started or even licensed. So I know that that was one of the main concerns that you had, was the traffic issue. And so, we just wanted to also let you know that preschools operate after people are going to work. So it's after the rush hour, it's before children come home from school, the elementary, so the public schools, elementary, middle school, high school. And we aren't operating on weekdays. Most of us aren't operating in the summertime. We give our students summers off. And with the traffic, drop off and pickup is only a couple of minutes. The parents aren't parking there for the, you know, two to three hours that we have our students there. They are just dropping off and then coming back, and it's usually five minutes or less where there would be some cars parked in front of the home, so. Are there any other questions or?
Yes, Councilman.
And I know that it's, not all of these are typical, but I'm just curious, how many of the students would you say just walk?
Walk? I would say more than half.
More than half.
And that's kind of the beauty of an in-home preschool. A lot of parents like to have that option, to have it so close to home where they can walk. And so, a lot of them do walk.
I guess one of my questions, so when I took my kids to preschool, I always walked them in. So I did park, turn off the car, walk them in, come back out. And so I wasn't just the "I'll shut you out" kid. And then the other thing, I think one of the concerns is, do you have normal graduations or?
Like a year-end celebration, things like that?
Or even like the spring one or Christmas one? Do you have times, or how many times a year do you have that all the parents will come at once, park, be there for an hour or so?
Okay. For me personally, I do my preschool graduation once a year in May, and it's actually at the public library. So I don't even have parents coming and parking, anything of that sort. But actually, all of my parents do just stop and drop off their child. They don't even walk in because I'm right out there to, you know, walk the child in. So, but I can't speak for the other two, but yeah, that's how it works with my preschool, so. Any other questions?
Apparently not. Does that conclude your remarks?
It does.
Okay, thank you. Other people are allowed to speak, not just one. So if you'll come up, please introduce yourself. And we did get the name of the last one in that, so if you would introduce yourself and...
My name is Shayla Faircliff. I'm from West Valley. So as far as the traffic, I, like, it's like her, we have all of our activities, like our group activities at libraries, so none of that ever happens. You asked about how many students walk. So I've been running it three years under the six-student ratio, and I have four cars. So that tells me that one in every three students carpools or walks. And so if we up that to eight or even 10, I'm still sitting at the max of six cars, maybe seven at the most. So the two or three more students really doesn't, in fact, it helps my ratios get larger. Also, my absentee ratio, right now, I'm one in every six students, has gone every day. On a daily basis, I'm one student short. So when I go up to 10 students, I have the opportunity of almost having two students a day missing, which drops my cars down even more. So as far as the cars in front of the home, I would say the max, based off my experience over the last three years, is like seven cars for a five-minute window, twice a day, pick up and drop off, and that's it. So as far as the traffic goes, it really doesn't have an ample effect on anything, so. Any questions?
Councilman Lang.
So do you only run one session?
I've been, I had to do two this last year because six just wasn't enough. Like, A, it didn't cover my expenses as far as running the preschool and covering my taxes and all of that, so I was forced to do two sessions. So having that higher student ratio actually would allow me to go back to one, which not only helps me, but helps the students have more kids in the class and also helps the neighborhood not have as many cars too. So having it down to one is definitely options when the classes are bigger.
All right, anything else? Thank you. Next.
Brittany Peterson. Did I have anything else to give? Okay. One of the things that I wanted to discuss was the, oh, sorry, are you good? Okay. The, one of the other things along with what they're saying that I wanted to discuss was the difference between the preschool and other home occupations. Because we've heard about different home occupations that are either drop off, and it's a constant drop off throughout the day, even though it's just five minutes, it's still a lot of dropping off during the day. And that's not the case in the preschool. At most, we were saying if 20 minutes per session, if at the max we were to do three sessions, it would still be an hour a day during the time that nobody is there. And so that was one thing that I wanted to discuss. The other thing that I wanted to discuss was that it's, while traffic is a concern and an issue, it's very important for the children as well to have a higher ratio. Because they have, when it's a smaller class, it is much harder for us to maintain the peace in the class, so to speak, because they kind of, they need other people there to... Yeah, right, follow the directions and the example and, and that, so to speak, it's kind of the mob mentality for them, you know, because they, if there's one student acting out in a group of six, they all tend to follow that. Whereas if you're in a group of 12, it kind of gets lost a little bit and the behavior, the good behavior kind of overtakes that. That's why it's so important to us to have a higher ratio, is because we're dealing with a lot of educational issues as a teacher, to class management issues, so to speak. And so, and I understand that the concern is the traffic. Like I said, I talked to, you know, I talked to other traffic engineer at West Valley City, and he kind of laughed at me a little bit because he was like, it's not even gonna be an impact. He didn't want to say that publicly because he didn't have the research either way to back that up, because he didn't have time to do that. And also, I talked to the other cities that had 12 and talked to them about having a traffic engineer, and they had any research on it, and they also didn't say it was even an issue, so.
Any questions? Okay. Thank you very much. Anyone else here to speak on this issue? Please come forward.
Thank you, Council. My name's Nate Faircliff. I just have a question, because we're new to the, to this process. So the question that I have is, they initially proposed to raise it to 12, they went through planning and zoning, and it was proposed eight. Is it, I mean, is it, can we ask for a compromise? Is there, is this the time to do that? Just kind of, I mean, like I said, we're new to this. We, you know, we want it to be a win-win for everybody, and just wondering.
It's your time. You can request or make any statement that you would like.
Okay. Well, based off, you know, based off of, you know, the information that the ladies have put together, you know, I, I, being the husband of Shayla, you know, she mentioned that she had to go to two classes a day. And being a, you know, being an at-home mom and trying to, you know, help out at the home and trying to help out with the kids at the same time, I've noticed the added stress level that is put on her. And so I know that, you know, coming to a compromise, finding a reasonable number that would allow them to still, you know, contribute to the community, you know, with, you know, being involved in Neighborhood Watch and the Neighborhood Two, you know, having activity in the community throughout the day is a great benefit, especially when most people are at work and things like that. It's great having, having those extra eyes in the community. And I know when you look at the crime reports in our neighborhood particularly, the crime rates are really low. And so I know that's definitely an advantage of having, you know, more eyes on the street and keeping the things safe too, so. You know, yeah, we appreciate everything you guys do and this, and, you know, we, you know, if it's possible, we'd like to request 10, if you guys would be willing to compromise as well.
That concludes your remarks. Any questions from the council? Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else here to speak? Please come forward.
I'm Garrett Peterson. Thank you for your time for listening to this issue. My one point is that my daughter recently went through preschool and she entered kindergarten, and something that I think she could have benefited more from going to preschool would have been learning how to function in a larger group, because now that she's in kindergarten, towards the end of the year, she's doing okay, but it was really rough for us transitioning to a 1 to 20, 1 to 25 ratio in kindergarten classroom. I know that some ratios are higher, so. I think that a larger ratio for preschools is better for the kids. I know you all have lots of concerns to balance on these issues, but that's my viewpoint.
All right, thank you. Anyone else? If there is no one else, then I will declare closed the public input portion for this application ZT-2 2015. Now that that is closed, we turn to the council, and we will consider for our purposes ordinance number 15-16, which amends the code for regulations governing home preschools, to the council then for discussion or action. Councilman Vincent.
Mayor, I'd just like to make a few comments. As my kids were young and growing up, we also had them go to a neighborhood preschool, which was a blessing to have that opportunity, to have them learn some of the basics before they started kindergarten. And also to learn some social skills, one with the other children. I, I believe that, uh, that changing the number is, is actually a benefit to the community and benefit to the neighborhood, allowing, um, more than six. Um, I'm not sure that, I mean, we're, the, the proposal here is eight. Um, and personally, I'm, I'm okay with the 10. Uh, I don't think it adds that much more impact on, on the neighborhood. Um, I know that in some cases, that, that would mean that they would only have one session, but it also might mean that, that there's two sessions that are slightly larger. But I think having one additional, maybe two additional cars that are dropping off is, is, is not unreasonable and, and doesn't really add, um, too much impact to the neigh, to the field and neighborhood, so I, for one, I'm okay with, with eight and I would even consider, uh, 10 as, as the number.
Councilwoman O'Malley?
I would agree with, um, Councilman Vincent, especially with the point of kind of a benefit of more cars driving through your neighborhood is more of a Neighborhood Watch. In my particular neighborhood, it's easy for us to get home from certain areas if we take the main roads and some members of our family do that. My preference is always to drive through the neighborhood, to put another car in the neighborhood, to watch the streets. People know that you're watching, so that is a valid point. So I'm comfortable as well as with the 10, um, students. I don't know if we have any ordinance that we don't have programs at the homes. I'm glad that these three operators have their graduations and, um, recitals or whatever at a library instead of in their homes, so that there's not cars parked out there for an hour at a time.
Councilman Ullrich?
Yes, I'm, I'm supporting them. I've just agreed with, uh, Steve Vincent and Karen Lynn. In fact, I'm thinking about gonna send my kid, one boy, he's about three and a half, over to their school this summer. So I'm okay with 10.
Councilman Buhler?
I have really opposing point of view, okay? And it's not that I have anything against, uh, you residents or against preschools or how you operate your business, but the way that I'm seeing this ordinance is, this is an ordinance for all preschools, those that exist now and those that don't exist now, those that might decide, "Hey, this is something that we can do now," that, uh, the doors have opened a little bit wider. And it's not an issue as to what is the optimal size of a preschool. This year, that might be 12, next year, it might be 20, and the year after, it might be four. I mean, these things, these recommendations for children, children's welfare, in my experience, always change. But we're not deciding how large preschool should be, how many children should attend that and what, uh, your particular business practices are. If you go to the library for group activities or graduations, if students walk to your preschool, how many sessions you have, if there's no, uh, classes held during summer or on weekends, that's really not in the ordinance at all. That's your particular business practices. They sound great to me, but that's not the issue before us and what we would be deciding. What I don't see is how this kind of a business, which it is, a for-profit business, is different than other major home occupation businesses in the residential area and why it should have different standards or expanded standards for a preschool, why it should be treated differently. Uh, the next thing we see is another type of business. "Hey, we're not that much different than a preschool. We have the same kind of impacts. We should be treated differently." Maybe the whole, uh, ordinance should be looked at and studied and revamped. Maybe it's antiquated, maybe it's cutting-edge, I don't know. But I don't see, um, making a distinction in the law for some very nice people that have come and proposed a kind of a, "Let's carve it out, make an exception for us because we need to do better in our, in our, uh, business and by doing so, we'll actually benefit the children by having more children in the preschool." And, uh, because of that, I am, you know, speaking in opposition to this particular change, not saying that a change is, is not warranted or should be looked at in some other context. Um, I don't know that six is the best number, six, eight, 10, 12, 14, 16. I mean, I don't know what the number is, but I don't see a, a distinction for preschools as opposed to other major home occupation residential businesses.
Councilman Lordfeld?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I'm gonna speak for, um, increasing the number to 10. I, um, I think that preschools do provide a great benefit to our, to our city and having them in a residential zone is, is the, is the right place for a small preschool. And, um, I think, I think that actually does more for the safety and well-being of, of the, of the children to have, to have it more in a neighborhood. And, and keeping it restricted at, at six is, uh, it's prohibitive to, to have that as a, as a business model. And, um, and, and so we're forcing more families to take their children out of our city to a neighboring city that allows, um, more children. And, um, I think that, that it's better, it's better for the children of West Valley City. I also think that, um, each license is approved one at a time and, and so if, if there's a situation that doesn't seem right, um, then the ones that approve the license can, can, um, cannot approve that, that application. I also think that, uh, there's already an exception in the law for preschools. We have a, a section for preschools and all we're doing is, is changing that number. And I think that, uh, I don't think that's gonna have a big impact on, on the neighborhoods in a negative way, but it could affect the neighborhoods in a positive way. So if, if it's all right, I'll make a motion that, uh, we approve ordinance number 15-16 with the amendment that the number is raised to 10.
That motion is proper. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a second before us. Any further discussion? Councilman Rushton?
Just as, first comment I just wanna make is, I'll just tell a little bit of clarification and I think your motion is pretty clear, uh, with the, with the 10. Um, the one thing that I noticed though is I think it's 4C. You know, we have the underlying section of the change, which currently reads, "May have up to eight children," but then down at four, and that's under one. And then 4C kind of goes to maximum of six. And so I, I guess that would need to be changed as, as well. It's, I guess, just more of a, uh, of an overlooked part of it.
Councilman Buhler?
I'd just make a comment to, uh, in response to previous comments, those are particular by the Councilman Lordfeld. I don't think that, uh, those reviewing the application can or in fact should have the authority to deny an application that complies with the law and by changing the law, we'll end up changing the rules.
I think I would add a couple of comments. I do not know the right number and, uh, I don't think the statements that have been made are any out of place. Certainly, the impact on the neighborhood would be minimal. There is great value in having a preschool within a home in a little better environment. The question for me is kind of a little broader one that I cannot address here adequately, and that is, what is the right number? And I'm less concerned about traffic. I'm not, I don't know, one more set of eyes or a few more eyes in the neighborhood. I'm sorry, I don't know what impact that will have. But there is an impact that I'm very much aware of and very concerned about. The more children you have in a home, and we're now talking, you know, going to 10, two sessions, 20, if you go three sessions, 30 children in a home. Back when I first was introduced to these discussions and we talked about, uh, childcare preschool, the reason that preschool was not included in state law was because it was neighbors caring for neighbors' children. It was, if it was a business, it was a very minor business. If we're gonna go to 30 children in someone's home in a day, that does not seem minor to me. Questions arise then about child safety, child health. The reason that preschools got regulated was because of the number of children and the risk that was placed upon them in that environment. Now, I know that's not in this bill, okay? Very much aware. So, uh, but I will say this to those of you discussing this issue out in your groups, that the more children you have, the more likely then, at some point in the future, that you will have state regulation. Because you move from the concept of caring for some neighbor's children in a small group where you know the children, where the parents know you as providers. But when you get to 30 children, then it's much less likely. Questions arise about fire safety, health safety, about, uh, the ability of an individual to properly manage and care for children. And these are children in a very, very vulnerable age and they have no concept of, you know, appropriate or dangerous behavior and the difference between them. And so I express those simply because I wanted on record that we as a council are aware of that. We are concerned about it. It does not appear on the surface. You know, when we were talking eight, I thought, "Oh, yeah, that probably won't make much difference." Now we're going to 10, which is not quite doubling it. And then it becomes more of an issue. If we were to go to 12, as some cities have done, it becomes even more of an issue. And so I can't give a good answer as to if six or eight is the right number or 10 or 12. But I do know that I have traditionally, throughout my life, had a great concern for the safety and the health of children. And all it will take is one incident, one lapse of judgment, where a child suffers or is injured for this to change dramatically. So, you know, you may receive the very good part of what you're doing, but it also may invite something different in the future. Just wanted to have that statement there. I've had my say, so... Uh, anyone else want to add more? Oh, there's Councilman Rushton.
Thank you. Um, I'm gonna soapbox here for just a second. It's happens, it's starting to happen more and more, so sorry, but, um, I just wanted to say that, um, just what a good exercise this has been and how I am extremely impressed with Alicia and Brittany and Shayla, Garrett and Nate to spend your Tuesday evening down here at, uh, city council to, you know, come and discuss your community and how it should be and, and where, what direction it should take place in the future. Um, you guys are all, uh, in my opinion, good Americans for taking place in, uh, this city government democracy that we have. I frequently lament the fact that, uh, one of the threats to our American democracy is this kind of cafeteria democracy where citizens kind of pick and choose which laws they want to obey and which ones they don't want to obey. And I think it would have been very easy for, uh, residential business owners in your circumstance to just try, try to sweep it under the rug and just hope nobody noticed how many little heads were, you know, coming through your doors each day. And so I wanted, I think, first and foremost, um, you know, give, give all of you that came today and worked on this and go through this process, you know, the, that, uh, I hold you in the highest regards for, uh, coming through and trying to make some change in the city. With that being said, and I spent, uh, some time speaking with Brittany over the phone on this, is that I've told her that, you know, for me, you know, 10 sounds good, maybe it's 12. I'm not quite sure what the number is, but to me, the paramount issue of the whole thing is, is just being consistent with every other home business. I've shared with her the fact that the experience we had in this council chamber about a year ago, where we had a number of residents show up and speak against a residential business that happened to be selling furniture out of their garage and just how, you know, upset they were. And I, I tend to agree with them and rightfully so, that that was probably a little bit of a stretch for, you know, residential zone to be moving that much furniture in and out, um, on a daily basis. And so every thought that's brought up and every argument that's come through, I think, "Okay, how would this apply if we put it back to the, to the, uh, to the mattress furniture person?" Or the person that was doing the, the juice bar out of their garage. And so, you know, I said, because some of the arguments as far as, you know, walking out or cars and, you know, I really don't think it's a traffic issue as much as it's, as, as it's just, "How much should there be, you know, in a residential zone?" And so, you know, I'm willing to defer to the experts that are here as far as what they think, as far as class size go, things like that. But the thing that I am worried about is just being fair with every juice bar residential business that's going on, every, uh, insurance agency, every, uh, you know, mattress selling for, in here. Um, because, you know, I don't think that, you know, it's, every, everyone is special. Everyone is unique and we have to treat them all the same. And so in that way, I was very firm and very convinced that, you know, eight, bumping it up to eight, which was the planning commission's recommendation, made sense because it was the same as any other business. It allows the two customers per hour, but in their case, they hold, you know, a four-hour session, so it's, it's eight. And so I, just in the, in the, you know, to where my, you know, heart tells me that you guys can probably do 10 and 10 will be fine and not cause a problem. You know, I think just to protect the whole fairness and equity above all, you know, I, I think I would be more comfortable just sticking with, you know, with the eight. With that being said, I'm also not, you know, opposed to carving, you know, if, if somewhere down the road, if this council or the planning commission thought that, to Councilman Lordfeld's point, of that, uh, preschool shouldn't be classified with, uh, other residential businesses because it's a completely different animal and we should regulate it completely different ways. I'm certainly open and willing to have that discussion because I think it has a lot to it, but with this current ordinance, we're kind of just treating it the same way as every other residential business. And so I, I think I'm just, I, I, I wanna make it happen with this in its current form. I think I'm just more comfortable sticking with the eight.
Councilman Buhler?
Just, uh, a math issue, right? If it's eight in the morning, it's only eight if they don't come back and pick their kids up four hours later than if it was 16 for that one. It's only if it's eight at the beginning of the session, if they don't come back and pick up their kids, then it was eight for that four-hour one. But if they come back and pick up their kids, it was 16.
For the two cars?
But I, I don't, I don't think the ordinance says cars though. I think, uh, it's customers. That's all down each little head that comes in as a customer. And so that's why I think eight is, is, eight is the, is the one that when the mattress, the guy that's selling mattresses out of his garage comes in and say, "Hey, it's, you know, it's the same, you know, all across." If there's, if, you know, if we really think that, "No, this is different." Uh, you know, a preschool is different than any other types of home businesses that we regulate. Except I am, I think that that's the more correct way and a discussion that I would probably like to, you know, have. But, uh, you know, I know it's, you know, you vote, I've said it a million times, you vote for the ordinance for what it is and not what it isn't. And so for what it is today, I think eight is appropriate. Another ordinance down the road that comes in and talks about, you know, ostrich parking or preschools have a inherent, uh, extra added value to the community, and so they should have this, like, I'm probably on board with a 10 or, you know, maybe even a 12. But what this is, is I think eight is the, keeping equity highest, I think is, is probably best.
Councilman Ullrich?
Mayor, uh, thank you, Mayor. Appreciate it very much. Um, yeah, I believe with the, uh, child care department is, we're, you know, uh, have a closer look to them regarding the safety issue and also how is your ability, they come to check your place very often, is that right? They call you, they come over, they check it. Uh, so I'm not really concerned much about it, but also, um, yeah, I just congratulate you. Come up here, very courageous to speak up and ask us about the permission to get a 10 or 12. I think that's wonderful. I think that's great. The reason I'm saying that, because about a year ago, I arrived along with, uh, one of police officers and we're not into, and then we, uh, we got a phone call from a, a family. He said, "Well, a toddler walked on a, walked down the street." And we came over, we picked up the toddler... And we came over, we picked up the toddler and we asked the person, the caller, and the caller showed us how, so we brought that toddler to, over to that house. And we went inside the house, it's numbers of kids over 10 or so. So, I mean, I'm telling you that story, why? Because I really grateful you come down here and ask us permission to do that. If someone like that, like that family, they don't ask a permission and they do a 10 or 12, who knows? See the point? Here, it says right here is that half of the classes, you guys, is basically walk, it's so, it's very much close to that area. And, oh, very good, you know, have no problem, there's no neighborhood come here and say anything opposed you or against you. I don't see that point here tonight. So I support you guys, with 10, be okay with me, no problem with that. Just like that family, I just, you know, sharing with you that story about police officer and I were there. You see that? They don't do that. They don't come here and ask us, you know, the number. But they didn't anyway. They didn't care about childcare department or anything, but I thought, you guys courageous, come down here and ask us, I think, again, the number, the 10.
Any further comments? Seeing none.
I just have one more.
Councilman Lordfeld?
From what Councilmember Rushton mentioned about the number in the code, we need to make sure that this, so clarifying my motion if I can, that
Certainly.
that the number's changed to 10 in both places in the code, that would be appropriate.
Any further discussion to the motion as it's now before us? Then we'll place it for a vote. All in favor of approving ordinance number 15-16 amended to 10 in both places, please say, or excuse me, wait a minute, because there's some division on this, let's get a roll call vote. I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Mr. Vincent?
Yes.
Mr. Blaine?
Yes.
Mr. Bueller?
No.
Mr. Q?
Yes.
Mr. Rushton?
No.
Mr. Lordfeld?
Yes.
And Mayor Vigilow?
No.
Motion?
Motion passes four to three. Okay, thank you very much. With that then, we'll move to item number nine on our agenda. This is a proposal to amend our ordinances. The Utah Legislature passed several bills changing municipal elective office candidate obligations and disclosing their campaign contributions expenditures. West Valley City's had a municipal code where some disclosures occur. The changes in the current state law are more expansive and impose greater disclosure and reporting obligations than those in our city code. Therefore, this will bring our city code into agreement with the current state law. Those are the items before us on ordinance 15-17. With that introduction, to the council.
Mayor, I move for approval of ordinance 15-17.
We have a motion to approve, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. Any further discussion or comment? Seeing none, we'll place it for a vote. All in favor of approving ordinance 15-17 amending the municipal election requirements, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. Motion passes unanimously. We have resolution 15-79 to approve an interlocal cooperative agreement with Salt Lake County Surveyor's Office to purchase digital ortho-rectified aerial photography. This is contracted from Google in the state of Utah for a three-year period, $3,750 from existing budget. And I believe that's all I'll say on that. Any, then I'll turn it to the council for any other comments or action.
Mayor, it's a move for approval of resolution 15-79.
We have a motion to approve, do we have a second? We have a second. Any further discussion?
Cost goes down every time.
Okay, someday maybe it'll get way down there.
They'll be paying us today. You used to ortho-rectify it?
Okay, seeing, I think that's all the comments, so we'll place that for a vote. All in favor of approving resolution 15-79 on this interlocal cooperative agreement for digital ortho-rectified aerial photography, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. Motion passes unanimously, the resolution is approved. We now go to our consent agenda and on our consent agenda, we have three temporary construction easements, 34, 36 West Meadowbrook Drive, 4280 South 3425 West and 2644 West 2365 South. And then we also have a special warranty deed street right of way, the fourth item, at 2644 West 2365 South. Those are fairly routine and we, I'll let you decide what motion you make.
Mayor, I would move that we approve the four resolutions comprising our consent agenda.
We have a motion to approve those, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second, the motion is properly before us. Seeing no further discussion, all in favor of approving our consent agenda, resolutions 15-80, 81, 82 and 83, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. Motion passes unanimously, the consent agenda resolutions are approved. With that, I don't believe we have a need for an executive session, so any further comments from the council? Seeing none, one final motion.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. Motion passes unanimously, we are adjourned.